I kept looking back at all my pictures on what we had been getting prior. And these are pictures that we were given before the public hearing on different big Ys that had been built. And son of a gun, don't I see a brown roof? So if Mr. Demore does contact you again, maybe you can find out where this is and we could go look at it.
That's in Lee.
It could be in Lee.
It is in Lee.
So, oh, it is Lee?
Yeah.
I don't think I'll go to Lee, but I guess the big Y does do.
I'll cook you dinner if you go in the summer.
Pardon?
I'll cook you dinner if you go in the summer.
In the summer, right, or to the outlets there. But anyway, I guess they do deviate from the red roof.
Well, they, the original ones did not have the red roof. The newer ones have the red roof, so they made a change.
They may have changed, right. So.
Yeah, I like that better.
Oh, yeah. Anyway, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I wasn't here for that meeting, but under number five.
Page five?
Yeah, page three, number five.
Page three.
You have Matt Moore. I think that should be Matt Demore.
Demore, page three.
First chair.
Number five, the second one.
Well, you know what, gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, we can't approve them because the members present, myself, Gene, Kathy, Ron, and Cindy.
Yeah.
So we're going to have to put them on the agenda for the next time. Doubt did not set for that email that evening.
Can we can't approve them with the three of us who were here as a majority?
Well, we've always only been able to approve them with the present members of that meeting. That's been the procedure.
You mean all the members? You that three?
No, no, the members who were seated that night seated tonight to approve them because they were the ones who.
You were seated?
I was.
Right, so you have three.
So you've got.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, we do have the three.
Yeah.
Kathy, you and Cindy, I'm terribly sorry. I can't count tonight. Thank you. We can't approve them. So I'm sorry. Who's made the motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of November 28th, 2017.
Second, she got it. Is there a second?
Second.
And further discussion?
Matt, said Matt Moore should be, Demore.
So the motion is to approve the minutes from November 28th with the exception that we change the spelling of Demore on page three. All those in favor?
Aye.
So this third item is to review zoning regulations. And the first is under agretainment regulations. Dr. Mordeasky, pleasure to see you back.
Thank you.
It's a pleasure to be here. Agretainment. We have been working on agretainment regulations and how this came down is this, is that we first of all worked on farm stands, farm stores, and a number of other things. And agretainment always was out there as far as what we were going to go ahead and address. In dealing with agretainment, how it went about this way. September 14th, Lisa Houlihan emailed me. Lisa Houlihan said, I actually have quite a bit of experience in agretainment. And I read this only because it becomes very interesting as far as how these recommendations for these regulations came about. I've actually got quite a bit of experience in this area. And Lisa emailed me this afternoon. She's got a horrible cold. She would have been here tonight, but she just had it. But that being said, with her not here, I really do want to read this to go ahead and speak about her and what her qualifications are. I've actually had quite a bit of experience in this area. Not only have I hosted dozens of moderately sized events, 25 to 100 people at my farm over the past 15 years, everything from pig roast, square dances, seasonal celebrations, outdoor plays, educational workshops, to Sweet 16 and Epic 18 parties, to memorial services, weddings, and graduation parties, as well as hosting other community events and environmental youth group activities through our affiliation with Jane Goodall's Roots and Shoots organization. Lisa Houlihan is Aisling Farm. I've also traveled extensively throughout U.S., Europe, and the U.K. enjoying many years of agritourism, hospitality, and on-farm events. I'm a longtime member of MOFGA and CT NOPA, the Spanoka Foundation and Slow Food USA. However, I still have a lot to learn in this area as we change our farm status commercial within the next year. In the past, I've loaned my property out or donated the space for charitable or education purposes because of insurance liabilities. In the coming months, I will be researching the nuances of how best to protect ourselves when we change our status open to public in the next year or so. And then it says down here, I am happy to be of assistance. This is September. So when it came to talk about agretainment, I emailed Lisa that. I said, okay, you're on. You are on. This is obviously a person with experience, with involvement, with a passion for the subject. And so between her and our zoning enforcement office, David Perkins, they had been working on this to the point where I believe we printed out our fifth revision of agretainment, which we've been going back and forth, back and forth. Now, quite frankly, at the last ag commission meeting, we presented the fourth revision. And to be perfectly frank, all the commissioners sort of looked at it and said, okay, we're kind of lost because we're not really familiar with it. I mean, this is something that's like foreign territory to us. So we haven't voted on these regulations. We haven't weighed in on them. The commission meeting is tomorrow. So we present these regulations to you tonight for your consideration and for your input. And what we will end up doing is going ahead and vote on them tomorrow night and then present them back to you. Now, in all fairness, this has been a work of effort between David and Lisa, and they've been going back and forth and back and forth. And if Lisa were here, she could answer a lot more questions than what I can't answer. So I'm going to default to David Perkins as far as questions and input and to go ahead and explain some of these things.
So have we looked at these?
Oh, absolutely.
Has the board looked at them? So the first section is, I think the most important thing to note at the beginning is that the following fee-based activities. So if you're not charging something, you can basically do whatever you want because it's your personal property. Once you start charging something, then we want to, we want to know about it.
If I could interrupt, that was one of my questions, whether that applied only to subsection one or to all, to the entire, okay.
So we have a site plan review shall be required when the following uses may recently be expected to require parking for 20 or more vehicles used by visitors to the farm at any given time. Other than that, they only need an activity permit. So there was a lot of concern about getting a zoning permit because that's going to cost you $110. And if we call it something other than a zoning permit, then we don't have to charge zoning fees and state fees and everything else. So it's just a heads up to me that something's going on, so when my phone rings, I know what's going on.
Is the permit fee 180 or 110?
The regular zoning permit is 110.
Because it says 180 in the paperwork.
Well, the site plan is 180.
Yeah, right. The site plan review is 180.
A site plan review is 180, yes. So that, that number of 20 or more vehicles as all our numbers from the commission is sort of a guesstimate.
We had to come up with something.
And the reasonable expectation is on the part of the applicant, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And so we know about it since we get an activity permit and we review it and watch it and see what's going on. And if it's over the, if it's over that, then I would come to you and say, we need to get a site plan.
One item I don't see in here, which I don't know if it'd be a concern or not, would be lighting. If, if someone was to set up a light tower, say for a parking area, that for either size event, I think they should discuss with you where they're going to put it just to make sure that, or your commission discuss it, you know, just show a location so that everybody's on the same page that it's not shining towards a neighbor's house or, or towards a roadway. But a lot of times, like, say a haunted hayride or corn maze or something like that, people do that at night. Or if it's a sleigh ride or something like that, at least for the parking areas, there tends to be some kind of lighting to just, just so it's covered.
So you have a different agricultural tourism, including but not limited to UPEC, CSAs, and workshops and classes. So those are sort of events that are going to take place at a specific time during the Agvents are pretty much the same thing, but they're less agricultural. In the second section, there's two different events. There's a small-scale farm event and there's a large-scale farm event. A site plan review would be required for, A, if it happens more than 10 times per year, or the required parking for more than 20 cars or more than 40 people are expected at one Again, that's a site plan, not a special plan. And the B is the larger-scale farm events, which would be large weddings and music and entertainment, and that would need a special permit.
Do you need a time limit on how long that can extend into the evening?
I think, did we talk about cutoff times?
I don't think we specifically talked about them.
Yeah, no.
No. There becomes a point when it might be aggravating to neighbors at night in particular.
Right. And again, that would be part of the, the location and noise that we have under, under B, that if the noise is louder than the state regulations allow, then they would be in violation of the state sound ordinance. And those do change during the daylight hours to the evening hours. I did, interestingly enough, get an email today from somebody who wanted to open a winery and have a tasting room with the winery. So that's all really governed by the state in terms of barrels and where the grapes come from, and the state does a good job of that. I, I would think that that would be an activity that would be covered under this regulation. If we don't think this is specific enough to cover a winery tasting room, then I think we need to tweak it to allow it to do that. Anybody have any input on that?
Wouldn't a winery part, be part of an agricultural operation?
Well, you don't always farm to drink.
No.
No.
You were saying they're not, they're not going to produce the grapes and then sell the wine. They're just going to like have a shop and have.
Oh, no, no, they have to make the grapes.
So that's agricultural. Part of, you know what I'm saying?
Well, if they're shipping, if they're shipping it off-site, then yeah, that's farming. But if they're, if they're consuming it on the site, then I would say that's a different animal.
So do you, you believe it should be separate from this?
No, I think that, that what we're working on now should cover that sort of activity.
Well, that's what I'm getting at. I believe it should also.
So we can probably tweak it to include something like that in the list of, for examples?
I, I think Dave's statement about lighting is important too, especially if you have an evening wedding or something like that.
Yeah.
If they could go till midnight, 1:00 a.m., perhaps you could talk to your commission on.
I think it just, it just needs to be addressed. I don't think it's a major issue. It's just something that should be covered.
There's parking, we did noise.
So I don't think you should do the timer lighting or anything, but that there should be something that at any point it becomes a nuisance to the surrounding, like you have in, in B.
Yeah.
That would be sufficient.
Have like the contact person.
Absolutely.
That somebody, you or somebody can get a hold of. If there's an event going on on a Friday night and there's a problem, that you need to get a hold of somebody as part of their zoning permit or whatever, there should be a.
Well, that's why we have an activity permit, so we have.
Are there, as far as like the, I'm thinking more of the large-scale events, is there a health department approval required for sanitary facilities or that's, I mean, would that?
That's sort of.
Would they have to demonstrate the health, would they need health department approval prior to applying for a special permit?
Yeah.
Same as a regular application.
Uh huh.
And then with the, for the large-scale events, I totally agree with a special permit requirement. So would that special permit just be for that year? Would it be an annual renewal?
I don't think we thought about it as an annual. Thought we thought about it as a.
Okay, because really. My concern, if it's not annual, if there's an issue with a facility where, okay, they got their special permit and every weekend there's a problem, you know, they'd have that special permit forever without a commission being able to say, look, you need to address X, Y, or Z. I'm just raising the issue of, you know, if it should be an annual permit or if we'd have enough control, you'd have enough control, you know, if there's excessive traffic or something, some, any issue.
Rather than just going to court, we can just live with it for another two months and then start.
Right, exactly, exactly. Or, you know, or maybe there's a way.
I think, I mean.
Maybe there's a way to renew it without a fee or something.
I mean, that's what it comes down to. But we've got to advertise it and do everything else to, to do it. So we've got fees also.
I think that makes a lot of sense, though. It's like the campground renewals that are required every year for any kind of changing conditions.
And I think the agriculture commission, they're always worried about cash flow.
Right.
But I think if you're really having a large-scale farm event and you're really making it happen.
You know, I don't necessarily anticipate problems with it, but I know firsthand in other towns that there's, you know, particularly like farms that have weddings where, you know, it's people from out of town. They don't, they come in for one day and raise hell and leave. And then the next weekend, another group from out of town comes in, raise hell and leaves.
Well, I think Cindy and Dave are on the right track. Maybe we should have it like a yearly permit. As you said, they may only do one time, but if it's profitable and everything goes well, they may want to continue it year after year.
Right.
Yes, David?
If this is sort of a, you know, we're just sort of dipping our feet in the water right now as far as this ag engagement and agritourism. And my concern is to necessarily over-regulate it, but in the same token, as we have all said, look, these are dynamic, these are, these are dynamic things. They can change. And it would, my initial response to Cindy saying that, you know, maybe we should go ahead and renew this regulation is that, well, isn't that the zoning enforcement officer to go in there and knock heads to go ahead and say, look, you can't do this and you can't do that and you can't do the other thing? Subsequent to that, you know, I think it's, I think you can go ahead and regulate it or change the regulations or modify the regulations to go ahead and limit the things that we don't even know is going to occur. And, and again, it can, really can go either way.
Well, I think as far, you're right. And I mean, the first step would, would be Dave going out and speaking to them.
Correct.
And hopefully it's a responsible party that is responsive to comments or concerns. The problem is once they have a special permit, it stays with them.
Right.
Forever. And under the terms of their special permit.
Special permit or changes.
As far as you can, you can modify it.
Okay.
Right, it's a permanent.
Yeah.
And then, and, you know, if it's one event, I'm not so concerned with one event. It's, I'm thinking of, I'm thinking of just over the town line in Summers where weddings were held at a farm near West Stafford.
Yeah.
And there was a lot of issues there. That's, and it was, it was something every weekend. That's, that's the type of operation that I think needs a renewal, not a, not a, you know, banjo fest in a cornfield for one weekend. I, you know, not too concerned with a one-time event.
So are our choices to, to make the regulations as structured as we possibly can to avoid that sort of situation? Or does that become replaced by having us go ahead and renew it every year?
I think what we're saying is that we could write the regulation to say the special use permit needs to be renewed.
I think the issue is, as David says, is that it runs with the land.
Right.
So if they, if they just keep saying, screw you, I'm not going to do it, then I've got to go get a judge to go shut him down. So I've got to go pay a lawyer. I've got to wait in queue for however long it is for the judge to say, you know, yes or no. If it's an annual event, from an enforcement point of view, if it's a problem, I just wait two months and then it's done.
I, I think it's got to be given a little more thought. No answer right here, but maybe there's a mechanism. What you guys talking over, a mechanism.
Maybe Lisa.
To renew it without.
Without a fee.
Right.
Maybe Lisa would have some insight since she's been involved with many, many things, how they, other people have.
Somebody's come across it.
Because the pushback from, from the farmers, agriculturalists, the people who are doing this are going to say, every year I have to pay this permit? It's the money aspect of it. It's the pushback.
Or, or maybe you put language in that if the conditions of the special permit are violated, you know, it can be revoked or something. I don't know. You know, it's got to.
It's just about, it's just about the money as far as the farmers are concerned.
Oh, absolutely.
Right, well, it's also in planning.
That's right.
I mean, you don't know if you're going to get, you know, you want to put money into your property to do this every year, and you don't know if you're going to get renewed next year. I understand that.
Correct.
But, you know, I think, and I think it's a balancing, and I agree with you, Dave. I'm, I'm, you know, I'm not a fan of over-regulating. I, I think, and, you know, obviously this is brand new to me, I think I'd rather see the regulations a little more flexible. So as you said, because we're new into this and we don't know what kind of activities we're going to have. I think I'd rather see that and then have some way that David could enforce or address issues without having to take on a formal enforcement action, which as he said, is very expensive. So I think that's really kind of the balancing we're looking at.
Well, legal counsel will be there tomorrow night. I'll put the, put the word to her and see what she says.
There's one, I don't know, I'm going to throw this out, that the initial special use permit fee be paid, and if they come back in a year with the same thing that we could somehow put it in, that the fee is a one-time fee for the same, that they wouldn't have to pay again the following year, a one-time fee.
We could probably do, we could work something with that.
That probably would address it as far as not impacting the farmers for monetary. But I have to think about.
I mean, the other side of the coin is that it's a special permit public here and we got to advertise it. Somebody's got to pay for that.
It does cost money.
It's not going to be the town that's going to pay for that.
All right. I really think Lisa can be a help in this one too, to see how other.
I'm sure, I'd be willing to bet there's language in other towns. Arlington passed new agretainment stuff a year or two ago, I think.
And the bottom line is, it may be that you just got to bite the bullet and pay the fee. That may be the bottom line.
Yeah. It is the bottom line.
Otherwise, I think they deserve excellent proposals.
Thank you.
Excellent. They moved it to, you know, and even have the application.
Well, Lisa Houlihan and David Perkins are, are to the credit of these proposals.
Oh, we have, we don't give him enough credit. We praise him every meeting, Dave, believe me. He's doing great. No, I, I think it's just the, the fees, that's the problem. I like it that there's no fee for the ag activity permit because that's very small scale. But then when you do go the large scale, they, it could be profitable for a farm and the fees may not be a problem either, but we don't know.
A question on definition. What pray tell is a sound absorption plant? Is that a bunch of trees you plant or?
Yeah, fences, trees.
Yeah.
Berms.
Okay. I just wondered if it was defined somewhere.
I'm sure. And then you have the state D E E P.
I don't know what that means.
Any other discussion we can have or questions?
I appreciate your input and we'll go ahead and mull these things around at tomorrow's night's meeting and give you some feedback.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Mordeasky.
Thank you.
What was the name of her farm?
Aisling Farm.
Aisling?
Yes, Aisling Farm.
There is one thing under farming agriculture that I'm really thrilled to say. I received a pamphlet from Congressman Courtney, and Congressman Courtney joined Representative Glenn G.T. Thompson, Republican from Pennsylvania, to introduce a bipartisan bill that would provide student loan forgiveness to young farmers.
Ooh, wow.
I certainly hope that they could get that bill passed.
And.
So, and they're working bipartisan on it, which I think may help it along. But I, I think that's a wonderful thing, forgiveness to the young farmers. So just a sidebar there. Thank you, Dave.
You're welcome.
So the other accessory buildings. Dave, you've been working on that, our current regulations we have here, and then your proposed. Would you like to go through, I know that you said our current accessory buildings are not really appropriate accurately. It's kind of silly. So do you want to go over?
Right. Well, I sort of made the demonstration about how you can't have it within the, they've got to be within the, more than 75 feet away from the street or the rear half of the lot. So if you have a 300-foot lot and you want to put your shed five feet away from the sideline, it has to be, I mean, 50 feet away from the street. And as long as it's less than 15 feet in height, it can cover up to 25% of your rear lot. So it can be huge, which I don't think was the intent of the regulation. I think the intent was to allow tool sheds to be placed pretty much anywhere. So that is what I wrote up back in October. Accessory buildings that are not more than 200 square feet in size and not more than 12 feet in height may be located no closer to the front line in the front plane of the primary structure. So if the structure is 20 feet from the road, you could have it next to your house 20 feet from the road, which seems to be a reasonable place to put a shed. The, I picked the 12 feet rather than the 15 feet because we measure height to the midpoint between the eve and the peak. So that way it would actually be 15 feet tall if it had a five-foot peak to it and it was 10 feet the structure. And then that second point was just taken from D on the current regulations.
Right.
And then that next paragraph down below is from your regulations also, which says private garages. Again, we have barns, we have garages, we have storage sheds, we have sort of.
And they're all defined separately.
Yeah, barn has an animal in it, keeping animals in a barn. Somebody comes in to me and says, I want to build a barn. I say, well, what are you putting in it? I say, well, what are you putting in it? And they say, well, we're putting my car. Well, it's a garage, it's not a barn.
Or what if you put hay in it, you don't have animals in it? It's a barn.
It's a barn.
Okay.
It's an agriculture room.
Okay, as long as it's not limited to having animals.
What if there's hay next to the car?
Well, that's an issue.
Now, if, if someone wants to build it, I know this came up a lot before, people building detached garages for car collections.
Right.
You know, this is limited to three bays. Well, actually, you define the bays as by twenty four foot wide, so it's really a six. Car is the maximum.
I mean, well, this is sort of, I mean, it's telling you how big your bays are gonna be rather than the maximum size of the garage. Who cares how big the bay is? Or what you're really gonna do with it.
No, it just came up a lot before and I know there was a, had a maximum of three bay the old regulation had a maximum, didn't make any sense.
Doesn't make any sense, right. And you can have as many accessory buildings on your lot as you want. So you just can't have a four bay garage where you can have two three bay garages.
Right. Split apart.
I mean, there's one guy over Orchidville Road or something who's got like six sheds.
Yeah. There's a few people.
But they're all, I mean, they're, they're all approved. He's got, you know, he's got.
Well, it's the same thing, it's covered too.
Right, so you're maxed, I mean, you're covered by your coverage anyway. So who really cares?
Well, you can only have as many as you max out the coverage ratio.
Right.
So, do you think?
I would sort of just get rid of it.
Get rid of the three point two, the current, and put in the?
No, that whole, the, on the proposed page. Where it talks about private garages.
And the, the paragraph accessory buildings may include private garages, just take that out?
No, the whole section at the bottom that says accessory buildings may include private garages.
Right, take that all out.
The only thing you really wanna do in there is, is be able to keep your commercial motor vehicle max in. And the rest of it, I don't think you really care about.
Yeah, I think it just confuses.
Keep commercial, commercial.
But you definitely want a, the commercial vehicle in there.
So would you, and then I see you, you changed the standards, you know. You just took out the effective dates and then you added the two hundred square feet.
Right, and we picked two hundred square feet because that's the building permit. More than two hundred, the building permit.
So the only change would be to take out everything except the commercial motor vehicles in this paragraph?
Yes.
So.
Is that gonna flow if you take everything out except that sentence? Not more than one such space shall be occupied.
No, but I can rewrite, I can rewrite it.
Which will do that, okay.
Rewrite it, yeah. So how about you rewrite it? And then we will hold it in when we have a public hearing for probably agro, agro-tenement. That's hard to say. Agro-tenement, that we could include this also. Thank you, Dave, for that work, I appreciate it.
Then the, you asked me to look into accessory apartments. And.
In-law apartments, yeah.
And I, I, I printed out the Branford.
Yes, yes, I went through that.
Regulations, because they, they used to have in-law apartments. And they had the same problem that they were becoming regular apartments. And so they have sort of the same language as we do in terms of at least the owner has to occupy one of the structures and everything else. But you can rent it to pretty much whoever you want. And the only caveat they added was number eleven.
Right.
Which is it has to be affordable housing.
The owner of the accessory apartment property must file a deed, well, we would call it an in-law apartment.
Well, no, we wouldn't because it doesn't have to.
Well, that's what I wanted to talk to you about.
Okay.
Our four point five conversion for related family unit in-law. The reason for the, the apartment would be for the in-law, mother, brother, sister, et cetera. I think this should stay. And I reviewed all the way through to J. Relative, I went back and forth with these. And basically what they're saying here is the same that we have. Only we have it on the definition that has to be an in-law. But under, under J, we don't have enough parking as opposed to what they're saying in Branford. So I would like to, to see if we could look at that about the parking. They're saying at least three off-street parking spaces shall be provided and we only have one. So I wanted to discuss that.
Oh, is that one for the?
The in-law apartment.
Right, I think they've got three for everybody.
Correct, for the accessory, right.
No, I think he was saying the three was for the entire property, for both the main house and.
The lot in which the accessory, at least this is on the accessory apartment is located shall be of sufficient size and shape to accommodate parking and other normal requirements without compromising the care return, at least three off-street parking spaces shall be provided.
I think that's for the whole lot.
The whole lot?
Yeah.
Oh, all right, okay. Then the other one was.
It'd be silly if it wasn't.
What we have is, under K, we have upon vacating of the unit by the originally intended immediate family, the in-law apartment unit will be altered to return the house to its original status as a one-family dwelling. To me, that, that just does not make sense. Because if you put on in addition to the house, you're not gonna take it off, number one, which this kind of says, which we would never make them do. And I, I really think that should be replaced with the number eleven under Branford, which they must file a deed restriction on the land records requiring that the unit, if rented, be rented at or below prices that would qualify the apartment as affordable housing. I think we should allow them to, once an in-law vacates that, to rent it. But at some point, they need to notify the town. And I don't know if taxes would be different since they're gonna be getting an income and if it consider multi-housing or. So that's what I wanted to discuss with you. The difference between an in-law apartment, which we have now, and the accessory from Branford. Where is the benefit? As far as for the homeowner?
Well, I think from the assessor's point of view, they're, they're sort of stuck with that in-law listing.
They are.
So they're gonna get taxed on it until they come in and say, I wanna change it. So that's sort of the tax issue. The other issue. Say it again.
I was just gonna say, I don't know though, because a single-family home isn't taxed based on, based on income. Even if you were renting an apartment, I don't think the taxes would change.
Well, she's got a, she's got a button for residents with in-law.
Okay, and does that affect the assessment?
Yeah.
In other words, you want to really solve faster.
Okay.
Is it the value more?
What?
Some of, I'm, I'm thinking that perhaps the value of the, the house would be more so your taxes would be more.
Correct. I mean, not necessarily, but it is, all I'm saying is it's a classification that they, that they have.
I guess we have to go back to why this law was written. Was because apartments were popping up everywhere under the rules of an in-law. So then when we put the, on the books, that's what we have put, that it has to revert back. But it's silly because you can't.
Exactly.
You just can't police, you can't police.
Just policing the renewals, the three-year permit is, that's impossible.
Yeah, and it's been sitting on my desk since I got here and I, I can't even get my hands around it.
So that's why I wanted to bring it up tonight to everybody is.
But what's the difference, what's the difference to the neighborhood? By having a small apartment attached to a house? I mean, this way you limit it because you can only do it if you're gonna rent it to a relative. If you don't have a relative to rent it to, you may just do it anyway, which means.
It's because we could contain the size of it. It's the size. The seven hundred and fifty square feet that we put it to. Otherwise, if we go carte blanche, then they'll be building.
Well, one, one potential issue is that the in-law moves out and somebody moves in with a lot of kids or something.
That's right, that's the one I was reaching for, right there.
And our schools do, it was population and, and also to limit the size. Then you're not imposing apartments all over town or mountain, multifamily. So I don't wanna change the in-law apartment definition. But I do wanna take out that it has to revert back. I think maybe we could insert that at such time the in-law's not there, that the property can be rented. I don't know, something like that. I, I want your input, yes, no?
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's not a bad idea.
Would that be a compromise?
And I think the affordable housing thing is, is, you know, you sort of catch them a little bit. The rent's still, like I wrote, it's like, you can still get a pretty good rent out of it.
That's, that's definitely to police, but.
Well, if you, if you regulated the size.
When it gets to sort of ten, you know, a ten percent.
Seven hundred and fifty square foot of apartment.
Don't bother.
Well, I, I, you know, I mean, you have to have some reasonable understanding of seven hundred and fifty square feet, one bathroom, one bedroom. So I guess I need, what do you think? Just to keep what we have, take out the, the, not take out the K, we could just change K to say upon vacating of the unit by the originally intended immediate family, the in-law apartment will be able to be rented or something like that. Yes, no?
And how about a few, a few, a couple of months ago, we talked about the, the RV in the backyard for the medical child seventeen fifty-five.
Temporary built.
Temporary healthcare structure.
Right.
And we decided to opt out of it.
Right, right.
So you could, you could sort of opt into that in this regulation by saying it doesn't have to be a relative or an in-law, it could also be a medical person.
Or a caregiving situation.
A caregiver.
Wonderful suggestion, Dave, yeah, yes. Yes, Cindy, Dave, yeah?
Yeah, absolutely.
So in-law slash?
Caregiver.
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 Because the town's aging as well, so you may not have, your kids live in it, but you might need a nurse.
Right, right, wonderful suggestion. So I would like to keep the related family unit in-law slash caregiver. We can do that apartment. But then change K to allow it to be rented upon the vacating of the original. Okay? And we don't wanna change the parking at all then.
But you could also, you know, you may have a situation where you have a, a a family living in the house and you've got the mother-in-law living in the apartment. And then the mother-in-law dies and you rent it for five years and then your kids wanna come back because you're old now. And you move back in and use it again.
Right. I think that's perfect.
Yeah, well, I mean, that's what they do.
I think that's a, a perfect, because you, we know, we know they've been in-law apartments built and the in-laws are no longer there, we know that. And so I think it's silly to keep a law on that where you just can't police it whatsoever. And, and this way, you know, there wouldn't be any ramifications to anyone. So as Cindy says, you know, I'd like to be a little less restrictive in our regulations on some of these things, it's silly.
Are you still gonna require the three-year, a three-year permit?
No.
Gonna eliminate that?
No, we should eliminate that. Thank you, Dave. H, that should be eliminated. But they do shut, but, yeah, right, don't they need a permit? They would still need a permit.
Yeah, it's just.
Original, right.
The original one?
Right, original permit. So we can just take H out, period. Just it doesn't have to be three years.
I mean, there goes your special permit with the three-year, that was never believed, yeah.
You don't want to find the number of children that can be occupied there? That's a myth.
I would almost think they should.
That's pressure on the school system.
Zone, just the zoning permit.
Well.
You know, have two families on the same property.
We're trying to stay away from numbers and being restrictive.
Have you ever seen one denied?
I know where you're coming from, Doug, but, you know, it's seven hundred and fifty square feet, one bedroom, one bath.
Yep.
One little kitchen.
Yep.
Yeah, that's, that's the limitation. And as you just described, you can't, you can't regulate the number of people.
No, you just can't. And, and then our, our regulation, if we put that in, is outdated already. It's, it's crazy to do that. But I like the affordable housing, yeah.
Nancy, do you think that that should, it should remain a special permit? Or you think it could be a zoning permit issued by ZEO?
I think it's just a zoning permit.
Cause it's kind of been a token process.
I mean, you do that as a home occupation, you don't have a special permit unless the ZEO thinks it, it needs one.
Right.
You know, and I can always bring it to the commission.
Right, if you have some question, I think.
But if you have no questions on that, I certainly don't think they need to come before us.
Right, meets the criteria if you do the ask.
Okay, very good, thank you. I really wanted to do that one. Now, let's see, what was my next one on the agenda there?
So I just threw in your regulation updated goals as of two thirteen. Just to see if there's anything else that we have done or haven't done.
Well, the subdivision regulations we reviewed. So I would say we're done with that, the open space, we're done. The, the work live, we never really got to work on that. As far as the underlying, under number three, the buildings to be converted shall be existing only.
That really needs to be looked at.
Because that was the issue we have down, you know, Center Street. Would you call that an industrial or commercial building?
Yeah.
It was. It was and it was converted. The work live.
So now it's.
The old classroom, the old printers, the old, right, on the corner.
So now it's apartments, we know that. Most of them are apartments.
Yeah, basically, you know, that we didn't get to any work on the regulations. We were dealing with the attorney in assessing the situation down there and it ended up being, we did an inspection and somewhat demonstrated that work was being done in each unit, but it was all staged. And.
Wasn't hair braiding or something in one of them?
Yes, one was hair braiding, one was. But, but that, that needs work. Or, or very, you know, next one that comes in for that needs very specific conditions. I mean, they got taken, the commission got taken advantage of on, by that one. I mean, this, this one next door, I think it worked out fine. I don't think there's, there may be one or two units where somebody isn't working, but it's, I think it's, that, that was the intent of the regulation, not, not what the other one is, clearly.
That was the first one and it, and it worked out fine and we have businesses in there and, and then, you know, people just take advantage of us. So is, has there any court issue been done or lawyers or anything that?
No, we never, well, we, we, he demonstrated it, so we stopped. I mean, I, I'm pretty sure I left a file, that was with Mark Rance.
So there's no, nothing legally going on? Nothing legally.
We can talk about that if we need to talk about that.
No, I'm not, you know, I really haven't gotten any complaints about it, other than just people muttering.
Sure.
Yeah. Well, and I know the, the fire marshal is down there on a regular basis.
Yeah, he's, we, he stepped up, well, he does annual inspections anyways. And I think he stepped up his, his inspections also.
I think he's there a couple of times a year now.
It's quite a concern because you've got quite a few children.
Right, right, it's a lot of people in one building and. Right, right. It's a lot of people in one building and.
So if you wanna look at this number three, if there's anything you think we could add to our work live zone?
Okay.
We need to define the five hundred foot, but our notification and define what businesses may be included in the zone. Now, that was brought out. I don't know how you can define every business. I really don't know how we could do that.
Well, there's a, it's defined by how much money it makes, I think. It wants, over, you cross a threshold and it's considered a business. I don't know what the amount is, but I think there's a, I think there's, if it's the consumer protection or the IRS, you know, once it crosses a threshold, it's considered a business. It's not a, you know, meat braiding, hair, making a thousand dollars a week is a business, not a hobby with tips, you know. There's a, I think there's some threshold.
So do you think we need to define what businesses may be included?
I think you find where it's defined and you refer to that.
Well, I think that's what we did in the agricultural regulation somewhere along the line. We talked about the fact you needed to show an IRS form, you needed to be certified in the state. You know, you need to show us you're a business.
Shall we, should we include that in the work live?
Well, that's your intention. Your intention may just be to have somebody who wants to have a pottery and.
Right, it's also artists.
That's what it was. It was.
That's what it's also artists, so.
It was for your painting and your dancing and pottery and the arts?
I think it, I think it's gonna come down to being very specific in any conditions you put on a special permit. If, you know, an application comes before you for that, I don't know how much, it's pretty tough to write it into regulation every instance. But I think you get a specific application for a specific site, then you can give specific conditions to it.
And work live zone, they do have to come for a special use permit, so.
You just need to be, we just need to be tougher and recognize the people who are trying to hoodwink you.
I would, we do not have in our regulation annual inspection by the CEO and fire marshal. Does that really necessarily need to be in there?
No.
No. Include, not the intent for this zone to become apartments. Yes, no?
I think the wording maybe, instead of become apartments, become primary residence or something, some type of different verb. Which I think that's kind of blunt, how it's written.
No, no, I was just throwing it out.
Right, I know.
We would need to define exactly how to say that. But do we need to say that, I guess I'm saying?
Well, it's a special permit where you have a lot allowed to.
Right.
I don't think we would need to insert that since, under the special use permit, we can put any stipulations.
I can look at it a little bit more and bring you back to it.
I do want to put in the buildings to be converted to work live shall be existing commercial or industrial buildings only. Work live occupancies as a primary commercial industrial use, the proprietor will be allowed to reside as a secondary land use activity. I took this out of the regulation and it was so long of I can't remember. Remember I took that out of?
Yeah, I remember looking at that.
And which, so I thought that was very important to include.
To have somebody on site to be the boss.
Caretaker type.
So I'd like that to go in. So the end about the attorney, et cetera, that's a no brainer anymore. I did contact Ingrid on the conservation easement sidewalks, bicycle lanes, trails. And she was supposed to get to the other new chairman and I never got any contact back. So I think we can put this aside for now. Leave on that.
One of the things for bicycle lanes, DOT was doing free studies for towns. I don't know if they're gonna be doing it again this year, or they'll go out and do a safety survey.
Yes.
Only limited, they won't do the whole town. But if you had a corridor or a specific area in town, they give you the study because they may tell you, well, the road's not wide enough, you can't have, especially if it's state roads and many state roads.
Can't have bicycle lane or anything.
Right, yeah, I just bring it up if, keep your eye out.
On our main street.
Not bicycle.
Yeah, right. So I think we'll kind of put that on the sidebar. So Dave Perkins and I reviewed these food carts and vendors.
We should do that because the hot dog lady's gonna be back.
Yes. Do you?
She needs more control.
Across from.
Shell's pardon?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And there's sort of a few around and.
Yeah, they're, they're across from Sarah's, Sarah Mart. They pop there, et cetera.
And there was the guy, there was the guy who was doing the ribs down by the racetrack, which might not be a bad thing to have going down there.
Do you know of any towns that have regulations on these that we should look up?
Yeah, I can, I'll, I'll work on it during the cold weather.
Well, I think we could all help too, look up and find different things. So this alcohol testing, sampling events, temporary permits, I think that's taken care of in the agriculture. Agratainment. I keep saying it wrong. Agratainment.
Well, would that cover like the Blues Festival or?
We worked on that.
Well, those are, those are town property ordinance.
So it's just, it's handled under the ordinance.
Right. And we did number three, the old building uses with the adaptive reuse.
Yep.
That's done. Michael Brewery, Cideries, Wineries.
I think we're, I think we're pretty okay with that.
I do too. Density, net buildable area. This was an issue brought up a long time ago by Ella Ingram about net buildable area density.
We only have that one ten percent or fifteen percent, which is, which is coverage. Which is pretty skinny. Other towns have floor ratios, other towns have, have impervious coverage versus building coverage versus floor coverage. You can come up with any sort of ratios you want.
Right, no, our lot sizes are dictating the density. Our lot sizes are dictating.
The density.
And I went down and looked at a lot of the houses in the A, in the A-zone over by the racetrack. And a lot of those are pretty small lots and hardly anybody's over ten percent. And even up on the, on the hill, on High Street. Up there, those lots are pretty small and I don't think many people are over that size either.
I don't think there's any vacant lots in any of those zones where, you know, like a subdivision would come in, you know.
Oh, yeah, sure.
All existing.
So I guess that's another issue.
We could talk about it.
I don't think it's necessary.
But I really haven't found it to be an issue.
Okay, and collection bins, remember we talked about that, Dave?
Yeah, we decided we didn't wanna talk about it.
We don't wanna do that. So I guess on the, next time we get together, if we have time, I would rather work with the agratainment, et cetera, first. But perhaps we can look up the work live zone on other towns what their zoning regulations are. And the food carts and vendors. And then come back for that. So.
Food cart and vendor, they need a permit.
Well, that's what we have to work on, make the regulations.
We don't really allow them, so technically they're not permitted, they're prohibited.
Right, it's not, it's not in the reg, so they really don't, aren't allowed.
No, right. On that now, we require a vendor permit, which is issued by the police department. The fee's paid to the town clerk and the zoning office signs off on it. But they need a background check and fingerprints.
And that, that's on public property?
Yeah, and so that's, that's if somebody wants to do a food truck anywhere in town and that's it.
On public?
Somebody wants to sell anywhere.
Private property.
Right, yeah. You know, if they wanna park in front of a brewery, you know, on a Friday night with their food truck.
Right, and that's an ordinance here. That's an ordinance.
On public, well, you consider the street, but I'm, well, actually, these are on a site, you know. They go into a site, there's a building where a brewery is, and they, there's a private in there. But they do it, you know, somebody selling windows door to door is the same permit as a food truck.
Right, it's a, a peddler, right. But I'm talking more about somebody who's, the hot dog lady.
Yeah, setting up permanently, yeah.
For the season on private property.
Yeah.
Which is sort of a different animal.
Yes.
So definitely we need to work on that. We also said we had to bring up, this is the last thing, is roadside stand, Christmas trees, plants, fireworks sales, et cetera. Forget it.
I just, just forget it. It doesn't last long enough to really.
No, it doesn't. And unless we get any complaints, et cetera.
I've talked to a couple of other people. And David would probably agree with me that it's just, it pops up quickly, it goes away quickly, nobody complains. It's been going that way for years.
Yep, definitely. Okay.
Just as long as you're aware of it where they are.
Well, and they're always in the same, you know. You know, and sometimes you go out and you, you know, they've got signs in the wrong place and they're blocking, I mean, it's just sort of.
But, but you police that, so there's no issue there and there's no safety issues. And under new proposals, I guess once we get through what we just discussed earlier, I think the, a future goal for this commission would be for planning purposes as opposed to the zoning for the planning. And I would love to try to get the public's input more as far as what.
The POCD? The POCD specifically or?
Yep.
I mean, we did the subdivision, that's planning.
Economic Development Commission, if they, we could meet with them and see what their goals are and what they're working on. I think that's very important for the communication. So that's just something for, I want people to think about.
I wanna work on the other half.
The other half, the planning and not the zoning issue, right. Because, you know, we, we're here for the people. We're the people's voice of the town and we'd like to know what vision the people of the town have and what their, their likes, dislikes, and what they would like to see and not see, et cetera. So I would love to have more public come. So a new and other business, do you have anything, Dave?
Yes, I have an application from Carl Milikowski to have a farm market on Stafford Street, special permit. And he's all set to put that together to have a public hearing at our next meeting, January twenty-third.
He doesn't wanna come in for a pre-meeting?
No.
No?
I have an application from Skyline Quarry to renew their earth removal permit. That came in yesterday. We can have a public hearing on February thirteenth for that. Let's see, that was Kim, oh, I have an application from Avishan to work on the hardware store and also put in an O'Reilly's auto parts store on the same lot.
You know, those back buildings where?
They're gonna do, the building that's there is gonna become Avishan and there's gonna be another building to the left that's pretty much in the same position on the lot.
Just the modifications.
So that's exciting. The holdup has been the state of Connecticut, I understand, a lot of the holdup.
For the DOT, for the access, the DOT, is that where it is?
Pardon?
Is that what the holdup is? The, is it the DOT?
The DOT did hold it up for a while, but then they found this new tenant. So that's taken a while to put that together as well.
So they did indicate they would, by spring, get going, right?
Yeah, they wanna get going.
Going, yeah.
So I'm gonna get, I'm gonna meet with the engineer tomorrow. And then we can discuss it at our next meeting as a preliminary conversation. Then we'll have a public hearing again on the thirteenth.
Super. That would be.
Is that, what's, is it still over on the square footage? I know they're over.
Another hundred on the square footage.
Do they need a public hearing?
What, what did you say, Dave?
Yeah, they still need a special use because it's new retail, it's another retail space.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't.
I just didn't know if it would just be a modification of the other site plan because.
With the new building, it has to be.
I think we just do it that way.
Do you have anything else?
The big, I've been having conversations with the Big Y about the gas station and keeping the, basically the same site plan. I did talk to them today and told them that they needed to do something about the original request, whether we should deny it or they should withdraw it. So I do have an email from them saying, let's withdraw our original request. And it says, does this mean we get a feedback?
Oh, I don't think so. They are going to open the gas station though, correct, or no?
They are going to open the gas station, yes.
Gas station, right, just not the building.
They're not gonna change the building, they're just gonna put new signage up and new, what do you call it, the canopy? They're gonna put like signage on the canopy and pave the lot and.
Oh, good. Well, that'd be good.
So I'm still getting everything sort of piecemeal. So I did get a request for a sign today that was too large and too close to the road.
For Big Y?
Yeah.
Okay.
So they won't be happy about that.
Is that it? That's a lot. I think you've been busy.
Yeah, that's it.
Okay, I have one thing that I just wanted to make the commission aware. And this is like actually meeting procedures and I don't think we've ever really reviewed them before. And it, it came up at a meeting last month. So what I would like to do is to clarify a comment that was made at the December twenty-seventeenth Board of Selectmen's meeting, where a member of the public made a comment to the first selectman, Mary Midda, on the legality of commission alternate members or the public being allowed to speak at their meetings. The Planning and Zoning Commission was specifically mentioned relative to this comment. So what I wanted to do was to clarify to us, and at any point, if I'm not seated as chair, if I'm absent and anyone else chairs, then that they would know the proper procedures legally. A chairperson of any commission, whether it be an appointed commission or an elected commission, has the authority to set the rules for their meetings. Our commission, Planning and Zoning, welcomes the public to our meetings and welcomes their questions or comments. As far as alternate members of the PNZ, their participation is of the utmost importance as an alternate may at any time be asked to sit for an absent commission member. And if the agenda item for that meeting happens to be continued from a previous meeting, the alternates would have had the opportunity to engage in the discussion and be an informed voting member. There is one exception now to this, to the applicant, the public or commission alternates, where their participation is not allowed. When a public hearing is held and subsequently that public hearing is closed and a discussion and vote will be on the agenda, no one may speak again except for commission members who are seated for that meeting. So I just wanted to clarify that and I understand that there's been a legal opinion up in the Selectman Mary Midda's office stating the same procedures for the meetings. So hopefully we can get some more public people in and help us as we plan for the future. Thank you. Is there anything else that anyone would like to?
Just one question, Nancy. What is the source of that, the procedures that you just, that you just read?
The legal opinion from Attorney Muska. That's in the office upstairs, yes. So any other questions? Okay.
Nancy, does that mean that the meetings are now open to the public?
They've always have been.
Okay, is there, is it on the agenda? Is there a place where we're able to talk or ask questions?
No, as it's.
It's a, it's a public meeting, it's not a public hearing.
Okay.
Public meeting means it's open to the public and the chairman gets to run the meeting.
Okay, but the public cannot ask questions or cannot?
Totally up to the chairman. Totally up to the chair, chairperson.
If I elect to have someone in the audience speak, I certainly may. Because the chairman has the authority to set the rules for their meeting.
When I used to come a while ago, Cindy would take my questions if it was something pertinent to the discussion, like what does L B C mean or something?
Absolutely, question of the moment.
And that was usually the kinds of questions that came up, like disclarification or whatever.
And, uh, several times as we were reviewing our regulations, uh, we had some public come and, and they certainly had questions of why the review and what we're reviewing. And, and it was helpful for them and for us. So, um, no, we like our, our meetings open. But I, I just have to caution you, and this is state law, that when a public hearing is closed, not tabled or continued, but closed, then the only piece, the people that can, uh, speak, uh, to that application is the commission members who are seated. So that, that I just wanted to clarify that. In the event I'm absent and someone else chairs the meeting, that they'll, they'll understand that, uh, this is the rule. Now, whoever chairs the meeting, if they do not want to involve the public, they don't have to because they would be chairman for that meeting. That's their rule. So we can put that on our Facebook page, so, uh, everyone can see that. I have a copy for you, Dave, you can copy. And if you would like to, uh, put it in the minutes, great. So if there are any other questions or discussion? Hearing done, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Is there a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, great job. Thank you, everybody.